Yes, very much.
I'm going to assume the Borough Manager's line in the Borough Manager's office. I'll be honest, I don't go in Borough Manager's office. So that phone inbox is probably full, but I'll talk with him in SAP tomorrow to make sure that he gets all of the messages from it. Confused as to why Mr. Stoltz's box, that jumps to the manager for the code department? So I'm confused, but if I can get her, can I take up permission?
Sure.
I can reach out tomorrow.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Vivian B. Ford.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
You know, news doesn't want more carriers. And I'm here to ask a couple of questions which have come to me. I don't ever need to wonder about what's going on because somehow people always tell me what's going on and the news is good. So I'm very happy about that and I want to congratulate you for that. A question was raised about the procedure in selecting counselors when you are filling seats. And it said that it appears that you use two different procedures. One, you simply selected the person. And the other method was, or is, that you are going to have an interview and you have advertised. I think what people need to know is they need some clarification on that. Why did you use the two? Now, I had some ideas, but I'm not in a position to really answer for you. So they'd like to know why you used two different methods. It's definitely using the very same method to choose both counselors.
Thank you for the question and I'm happy to answer for you. With the, initially, we had a list of people who had already indicated an interest. That the first person on that list and the number one that was agreed amongst our body was Councilor Trueheart. For the second vacancy, which was unexpected, we did have some ideas, but we wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something, missing out on anyone. We anticipated that we would have one vacancy, but two were unexpected. So we were more prepared for the first vacancy than we were for the second.
I see. Well, I indicated that I knew that your focus was on transparency and that there was nothing that I thought was secretive about it.
Yes.
So, and I wanted you to stay that way, please, because that's something that you promised and of course, everybody expected that. You know I don't hear well. That's the other thing I wanted to ask. When are you going to do something about people like me who sit in the audience and cannot hear everything that you say clearly? There are, there is technology which can help me and I'm sure I'm not the only person here who can't hear. But it is very frustrating. So I think I heard everything you said, but I would, I did indicate that I'd like to have a call from someone so that I can talk to you about it.
Absolutely. And I will also ask that we add a kind of a request on our website that if you're planning to attend and you need some type of ADA assistance, whatever that would be, that we would be able to make that accommodation. So we will try to have that implemented, speak with our webmaster, Mr. Nichols, and we will see what, if you could help us and let us know specifically what would benefit your situation, then I'm sure that we would be able to, yeah. And this is, this is Councilor Beatty's line of work as well, so she, so I'm sure she could speak to it as well.
I just wanted to know, do you feel like captioning would be something that you may be interested in, to have like a monitor up with captioning?
Okay, I didn't hear anything that you said.
Okay. Captioning, is that something that you feel you could benefit from? Like we could possibly put a monitor and have captioning put?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's, that's an accommodation.
Should I? I forgot that.
Okay.
But we're, I'll gladly take those suggestions as well.
And software.
All right.
So we need to talk about, we should be ADA compliant.
All right. Thank you very much. And then Anna, AP expenses, mayors ordinance, and new counselor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
One of the things that I always talk about is fiscal management. So I'm hoping that we're all going to continue to be fiscally responsible. One of the things that we had found out at the end of last year was with regards to the engineering expenses. We said that what we were seeing was gross and that there were monies that would be coming that would offset what we were seeing. I just want to make sure that we're paying attention with regards to our engineering budget and that we're staying on track. Right now, if I look at the AP list, it's about eighty, thirty-eight thousand dollars for engineering. Once again, it's a very reputable firm, I recognize that, but I want to make sure that what we were expecting, and I'm not sure if we said it was grants that would be offsetting it, but that we're staying on track with regards to that and where we were expecting, how much money we were expecting our engineering firm to be. Because if we're not doing that at the end of the year, we may end up paying more for the engineering firm than we had anticipated. One of the other things that is on the agenda is an ordinance with concealed faces. I was just wondering if we could get more information with regards to how we were going to, and I know Philadelphia has already done that, but how we were going to do something with regards to that. Is it just ski masks? Is it going to be? We're in the winter months right now, sometimes it's very cold, very windy, people wear scarves, scarves cover their mask. I'm hearing that more people are getting COVID, they're using the mask to cover their face with regards to that. So I was just wondering if we could get some more information with regards to that, just because I'm sure a lot of the residents don't want to be in violation of a new ordinance. And then the last thing that we have on the agenda is possibly appointing a new counselor. And I'm sure everybody is very concerned with regards to that. And I know that you'll do the right thing, but we do need to make sure that whoever that we pick is definitely a very ethical person, has been in tune with regards to what is going on with regards to the borough, and is also definitely fiscally responsible. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. With the grants, I'm going to ask that, you know, all of the grants that we mentioned be listed on our website as well. It's the, what we've received, kind of like a running total, if we can keep that. What I've learned too, is that when we have the expenses that are incurred by the engineer, oftentimes the grants reimburse them at different times.
Right.
And after a certain work is performed, but we don't want to stall the project.
Okay.
So, just, just to have all of those grants listed and then what the, maybe even include what the engineering reimbursements may be, and sometimes they're different for each project. So to have that, we can definitely include that on our transparency portal. The ordinance was advertised in the newspaper and then will be added to the rest of our ordinances. So if there's something specific.
Oh, just take a look, that's all.
Right. If there's something specific that you, that you still have questions, because I sure do, make sure to shoot an email over and, you know, in our newsletter that will be coming up, we'll make sure to address, we have a section where we highlight an ordinance and I'm going to make the suggestion that this ordinance be highlighted, you know, what this new ordinance means for us. So it may be just a few bullet points to highlight how we'll enforce it and what the expectations are.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Without any further forms, there ends our citizens' forum. We will move on to the meeting minutes. Up for consideration is the January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four legislative meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I do have a.
First we need a second here.
Okay. A second.
All right. Having been moved and properly seconded, I know Councilor Trueheart has an addition's last correction.
Correction. So the question I have is in regards to Councilor Johnson, who initially, when the meeting started, was on the phone, but then she began to indicate that she could not hear clearly. And then she was advised by the solicitor that because of that, then she needed to, at that point, participate as a resident and not as a member of council. And I feel that that, that needs to be included in the minutes.
So the proposal is the amendment of the minutes to include the situation with Councilor Johnson being, going from a council member to an audience participant or resident during that meeting. So can we, do we need a motion?
If the person that made the motion and seconded it adopt that amendment, I think we're okay.
All right. All right. So is everyone in agreement with that addition? All right. So can we proceed with the roll call vote, please, with the addition?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Councilor Trueheart?
Yes.
Councilor Beatty?
Yes.
Councilor Peets?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Can I ask that you give your document that, with your lovely logistical handwriting, to Mr. Nichols? Make sure that they get updated. All right. Now we will move on to our mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. My report stands as submitted at last week's caucus meeting. The only thing I'd like to highlight is on the mayor, next to mayor's forum, or the first of the year, will be March, Thursday, March seventh. And Dr. B. Coase has promised to attend and answer all the questions pertaining to the field and the school district for the residents. And there ends my report.
All right. Under your report is also consideration for the adoption of ordinance number two zero two four dash zero zero one, the first of the year, for concealed faces. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance regarding concealed faces.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Can you just verify that everything was properly advertised?
It was. Mr. Nichols played the advertisement. Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Can you proceed with the roll call vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Councilor Trueheart?
Yes.
Councilor Beatty?
Yes.
Councilor Peets?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. All right. Next we will move on to our president's report. I would like to consider the appointment to an unexpired Yaton Borough Council seat vacated by Carlet Brooks, term to expire January fifth, two thousand twenty-six. Before we consider that motion, I would like to thank all of the residents who applied. This is a thankless job and anyone who volunteers to do it has to be doing it from the heart. So I just want to thank everyone who applied and now consider that motion.
I make a motion to consider the appointment for the unexpired Yaton Borough Council seat that was previously held by Carlet Brooks and the term will expire on January fifth, two thousand twenty-six. So I make a motion to appoint Michael Trent.
Second.
All right. Having been moved and properly seconded, I think we just move to a vote from here.
Counselor Mon, I'm sorry, President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
All right. That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Welcome to the team, Mr. Trent.
Left hand, right hand, and that's me. I'm Michael Trent.
I'm Michael Trent.
The sovereign swear.
Do solemn swear.
The defendant support.
The defendant support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the Commonwealth.
Constitution of the Commonwealth.
The laws and board and ordinances of Yaton Borough.
The laws and board and ordinances of Yaton Borough.
And the destruction duties.
And the restoration duty.
Our proper counseling.
Our proper counseling.
Would find out.
Would find out.
So I'll be back.
Well, be back.
Thank you very much, Counselor Trent.
Thank you.
All right. One quick announcement. Today, my two worlds collided. In my business world, Speaker McClintock showed up and advocated for the newly increased child tax credit. It's a huge benefit to working families. The state will now match the federal tax credit. And when we used to only match it at thirty percent, now we will match it at one hundred percent. So please make sure that anyone you know who has child or dependent care credits, that they file the state returns, I'm sorry, file the federal return and the state return will be amended as well. This is a huge benefit to families, giving them up to twenty-one hundred dollars right back in their pockets. And our, it was great to see our government at work, our legislators getting things done that will directly affect our residents. Food on the table, you know, people shouldn't have to choose between childcare and working and people shouldn't have to work just to pay for childcare. So this was something major. And Speaker McClintock moves through this borough quietly and efficiently. You know, just last week, we learned about the grant that was provided to our police department. And so we are just very thankful and hope that all of this good news continues. There ends my report and we will move on to our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam President. The only thing that I would like to add to my report, you kind of triggered something in my head. I would like to remind residents that when you file your federal and your state taxes, that you also file your local taxes. With Keystone Collection Group, we get a lot of calls here at the borough from individuals concerning Keystone Collection Group. A lot of times, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's because residents don't file their local tax, which you are now required by law to do. And that is the reason why Keystone sends you, sends you the notices that you get sometimes. And when you go to file them, even if you're late, the notice goes away. There's just a fee of twenty-five dollars for late fees. So I just recommend and want to remind residents that as you're filing your local and state taxes, that you also file your, I'm sorry, your federal and state taxes, that you also file your local tax. And my report, I ask that it be accepted and submitted at office.
Thank you. That was no fun. All right. Let's move on to our solicitors' report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I know Ms. Marsini was queried by council at the committee meeting. I know this evening, I did a follow-up and executive session to council about various property maintenance code issues and our office is working with Mr. Nichols and your office to vigorously pursue them and we anticipate progress in the very, very near future. Unless the council has any specific questions involving those properties, that would conclude my report.
All right. So yes, do you make the, the call?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and announce it. So council met an executive session tonight at six-thirty PM to discuss personnel and litigation.
Thank you. Tax collectors' report?
My report stands as last week with some of the issues. One, we have collected more money, but we're getting the program to do calculations and keep the record still. There are a few things that have to be worked out. So you should have a full report of what's been collected at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you so much.
Oh, wait.
Oh.
If you're paying online, the online program has been having a few glitches. And so I asked that you wait a couple of weeks. If you wait a couple of weeks, you'll still be in time for the discount, but I want your record to be straight when you make the payment. If you already paid online, you need to call my office so we can discuss how we're going to handle the thing. Because they were collecting from last year's taxes instead of this year's taxes and that's not sufficient.
Okay. Will you also follow up with a letter to anyone who may have had a discrepancy?
That's my plan.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I preserve those and I'm going to, I'm going to send out letters to them next week.
All right.
One more thing. I'm not sure of protocol. The borough, for the last two years and probably even longer, has been billed for taxes. The borough is not paying itself. So I need to know what's the process to avoid so that I don't send out bills out anymore to remove them from the list.
Yeah, normally municipalities don't receive tax bills. And I think when your, when the tax bills do come, it's not necessary, because we're exempt from taxes as a government entity. So they aren't tax bills. I think your, your bills are telling us that we owe for sewer and trash. So again, you don't know bill yourself for sewer and trash.
But they come back to me and I suppose, who should get them and pay them?
No, no one, because we're paying ourselves, so we should strike them from the record. And Mr. Kilkenny corrected wrong, but most municipalities, they just strike themselves from the tax rules.
They do.
So that the bill won't even generate. So we just need that to happen.
So is there anything particular? I just need to go somewhere and delete them and no bill you anymore?
Correct.
Okay. Twenty-twenty-five, you won't be billed.
Thank you.
We appreciate all saving.
The borough was up for show last year.
All right.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Our engineers' report?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to go back to the resident that, about the notification of the residents with that project. That is our project and the contractor is supposed to notify, so I will make sure that they're following through on what they're supposed to do. So I'll follow up on that. And then secondly, the only item on, for consideration tonight, I think at the work session last week, you heard from the developer and the owner of four oh four Industrial Park Drive. So the motion before council tonight would be, and I spoke with the solicitor and the manager earlier, to approve it subject to the comments in our letter of January tenth, twenty-four, and pending the drafting of a resolution between our office, the solicitor, and Mr. Nichols. So that would be the motion in front of council side.
All right. So consideration for the approval of land development plans for four zero four Industrial Park Drive. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded, I know we had a very extensive conversation about this property last week.
I heard.
Hearing none, can you please proceed with the vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
I can sustain his previous relationship with the development.
Good job, Mr. Peets. I was hoping you'd remember. All right. So the motion carries.
And for brevity, I did ask the, tell the engineer tonight you do not need to attend, so.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Next up, we have finance. We have consideration for the accounts payable list for February twenty twenty-four. Are we doing February? Yes, we're doing it.
February.
Okay. For February two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Counsel? Vice President Roelklaub?
Motion to approve the accounts payable list for February twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? I have one question. That's one. The payment for, I believe it was Mostly Web Inc. Is that going to be the final payment?
That's the final payment.
Okay. That's it? That's it? Mm-hmm. Wait. Please, take the vote.
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
All right. The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next, we have consideration of the cash balance report.
Madam Chair?
Vice President Roelklaub?
Motion to approve the cash balance report.
Second.
Having been proved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing none, can we proceed with the vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Nichols, I realize that I just took your area. Would you like to? All right. Up for consideration is the adoption of resolution number two zero two four dash zero zero one, authorizing the sale of two thousand twenty-three delinquent borough real estate taxes to municipal revenue service.
Madam Chair?
Vice President Roelklaub?
Motion to adopt resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero one, authorizing the sale of two thousand twenty-three delinquent borough real estate taxes to municipal revenue service.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question?
Madam Chair, do you have a question? It would be, one, two, three. Fourth paragraph makes a statement whereby the borough will agree to make Pam whole on any of the twenty-ten tax claims that go through the Delaware County Tax Claim Bureau judicial sale process when Pam does not receive compensation in full from the funds of such judicial sale. So my question is, why do we have to make them whole?
They front the money. I'm going to try to get this right, Counselor, but they front the money, they work with the county. As people pay their delinquent taxes to Delaware County, the dollars go to them. If something were to happen, if they don't fulfill their obligation to the county, they're pretty much saying that we will be liable to make them whole because they fronted the money.
Okay.
So we've received the payment up front?
Okay.
All right. Any more questions? Hearing none, can we proceed with the vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next, we have ordinance and zoning. With that, we have consideration for the advertisement of ordinance number two zero two four dash zero zero two, regulating waste dumpsters.
Madam Chair?
Vice President Roelklaub?
Motion for the advertisement of ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero two, regulating waste dumpsters.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Can you let us know how long it'll be advertised?
Once you authorize, it will be advertised in Monday's paper. We'll send everything to the Delco Times. I believe it's, this one's a seven day?
Seven days, yes.
Yes.
Okay. This ordinance will be advertised for seven days. Thank you. Can you, any more questions? Please proceed with the vote.
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next up, we have public works.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My report is as stand as of last week. Just wanted to know if anybody has any questions on anything, snow removal, upcoming storms.
All right. I think that we don't.
We do?
We got it.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We are moving on to public safety with our police department's report. I'll just add in for that really quickly, that Counselor Trent, formerly Resident Trent, requested that we publish the Valori Report. And in preparation for that, the mayor realized that there were a number of things that needed to be addressed before we just put this entire report before the public. So it will be published with a forward from our mayor for a lot of the things that, you know, at that time, a lot of us were left out of the conversation. So there, that the forward has been completed, and it will be published along with the report for residents to view.
Good evening, Madam President. My report stands if any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Fire Department report? Emergency Management, any updates? All right. Any updates for Recreation?
Very quickly, my report stands. We have a free rain guard workshop coming up on the second of March at the Havens and Recreation Center. The rain guard workshop is free for all residents who want to attempt to put a rain guard on their property. Please look at the flyer. I think it's on, it's online.
It was posted today.
And there are also some flyers out in the, the vegetable field outside. So other than that, that tip, except for the fact that I mentioned before that one of our residents is the number six triple jumper in the state of Pennsylvania. She will be participating in tomorrow night at Havens, or I'm sorry, at Lehigh University. And then on next week, the twenty-fifth, at Pitt State University, she will be participating in the state track game. So when she wins, we'll try to get her in.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. But before you leave the podium, I just wanted to ask if you are the famous Elmore Hunter who received recognition from County Council?
I do find that.
Are you, are you that Roy Hunter? Well, I'll just tell you, we are blessed to have you in our community. You deserve all of the accolades afforded you. We appreciate your service, and we are thankful. I had to look twice at that picture of you. Thank you so much. Without further ado.
Madam Chair.
Vice President Roelklaub?
I have one announcement with respect to the code, code department and Public Health Department committee meetings. They will be held on the second Tuesday of each month, beginning at six fifteen PM, ending at seven.
All right.
Oh, on the second floor. Not Zoom, second floor.
All right. And we'll make sure that that's added to our website, just in case you all didn't bring your pen and pencil to write it down. All right.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, it is. It's on the website.
Already there. Thank you very much. Without further ado.
I believe Monday's a holiday. Are we going to still have the same situation with the trash and recycling pickup?
No, it will be regular. Next week's regular. It doesn't affect anything next week.
It's a holiday for the borough, but not for the trash. The trash is a waste pit. And recycle, and recycling is a waste pit. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I make him second.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.